Good evening. My name is Vanessa Rittman and as co-president of the Mountainside PTA, it's my pleasure to welcome you all to our Candidates Night for the 2011 Board of Education Election. This forum is provided as a service to the public and is nonpartisan in nature. No endorsement for any candidate will come from this event. The PTA provides this opportunity so that all citizens may educate themselves about the issues and opinions so they can cast an informed ballot on Election Day. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our moderator for this evening is Dawn Clark from the League of Women Voters of New Jersey. Thank you, Mrs. Clark. She will be assisted in her task by Maria Briggs and Wendy Cockemo who will act as timekeepers. At this time, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Ms. Clark. Dawn Clark is from the League of Women Voters. She's a trained moderator and has been providing moderator services for forums and debates in communities throughout the surrounding counties for over 20 years. She's an active volunteer for the League of Women Voter Voter Services. She's currently serving as Director for the League of Women Voters of New Jersey State Board. She's a graduate of Bates College and received her MSW from Rutgers University. Dawn recently retired, giving her time to continue as an active board member of the New Jersey Association of the School of Social Workers. She's active in the Springfield Presbyterian Church as well as the League of Women Voters of New Jersey, and she's the proud grandmother of eight grandchildren. At this time, I'd like to turn the evening over to Ms. Clark to present our rules and procedures, and she'll take over from there.
Thank you, Vanessa. I'm very pleased to be here because it's always good when a community wants to hear from those candidates and wants to go to the polls, so we're going to try to encourage you to do that. I'm going to take the opportunity, though, to say that I would like you to avail yourselves of some of the literature that I've brought along with the candidates, and that is that the local league for you is the Berkeley Heights, New Providence, and Summit League, and they welcome your involvement, and if you would like, you can participate and become a member of your local league, and we would encourage you to do that. This evening's format is one that will be dedicated to finding out what the candidate's position is on the issues that are before the Board of Education. And as such, we're going to really focus then on the issues, and I would like to explain that format there. The candidates, four of the five candidates are present this evening, and each of them will have an opportunity for a three-minute opening statement. I would ask that you not applaud after their statements because that sort of slows the process down, and we would like it to move along, particularly for the TV cameras. After the opening statements, we will have a period of questioning, and at that time, I would like to ask you to come to the podium, speak into the mic, give your name and probably your address so we really know you're from Mountainside, and then, in a very brief statement, ask a question of the candidates, remembering that if there is some need for laying it out a little bit, you only get about two or three sentences to lay it out. The importance here is ask the candidates the questions, so I'd appreciate that. We'll have time for many questions. You may address any one question to a particular candidate, but every candidate will have the opportunity to respond to every question and every issue, and they'll respond, each of them, for one minute and a half, and the timekeepers up front will be taking note of that. And when the candidate has 30 seconds left in their time, the timekeeper will hold up a yellow card and advise them of that. Then, when it's time to stop, they'll hold up the red card, and at that time, the candidate can finish their sentence. No run-on sentences with a lot of semicolons, so you've got to be sure about that. Then we'll stop. Okay? The conclusion of the format will be then a three-minute closing statement from each of the candidates. All right. I think you probably know them better than I, but I'm going to practice pronunciation, so I'm going to introduce the candidates. And on my far left is Kathy Jakasitz, and she's a -- she's -- it won't last. She's an incumbent and running for one of the two three-year positions. On my immediate left is Dante Joya, and he is also running for the one of the two three-year positions. On my immediate right is Carolyn -- no, Jean Parker. Jeannie Parker. Okay. We'll get there. My immediate right is Jeannie Parker, and she's running for the one unexpired term of one year. And next to her is Carolyn Williams, who also is vying for the one-year unexpired terms. The candidates have drawn for places for opening statement, and so we will now begin with the first speaker, and the first speaker is Carolyn Williams. Just by chance, it goes this way.
Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. Good evening. My name is Carolyn Williams, and first off, I'd like to thank our moderator, Dawn Clark, from the League of Women Voters. I appreciate her taking her time this evening for us. Thank you also to Lauren Mblad, who was Executive Vice President of the Mountainside PTA for organizing this event this evening. It is my pleasure to seek reelection for the Board of Education. A little about myself, I have lived in Mountainside twice, the first time for three years in 1997 and most recently since 2002. I live here with my husband Craig and our two children, Caitlin, 17 years of age, and Connor, who is 14. My daughter attends Governor Livingston High School, and my son is at Deerfield Elementary, and both will be graduating this year. I grew up in Portland, Oregon, and graduated from Sunset High School in 1980. I attended the University of Oregon and Portland State University, majoring in elementary education, before moving abroad to Australia. Upon my return to the United States, I attended Miracoast College in San Diego and became accredited as a substitute teacher in California State. I worked as a preschool teacher at Horizon Christian Preschool for two years before moving to Mountainside. Once situated in Mountainside, I jumped right into the community by serving on the Board of the Newcomers Club as one of the co-chairs of Mommy &amp; Me and later the Ladies Activities. I successfully homeschool my children for five years. The choice to do this was made to maintain a consistency in their education as my husband's job as a hotel general manager kept us moving fairly regularly. I quickly realized the benefits of volunteering for the PTA, and as soon as my children went into the Mountainside School District, I joined and began chairing and co-chairing events. Field Day, the Birthday Book Club, and the Community Pancake Breakfast, to name a few. That led me to being elected as PTA co-president with Donna Klein for two years. Being PTA president was what inspired me to make the jump to serve on the Board of Education. Over the past three years, I have attended over 55 board meetings for Mountainside and 60 as liaison to Berkeley Heights. I have attended a number of professional conferences and workshops to learn my role and responsibilities as a board member and to bring back valuable information to our board. For two years, I served as PTA liaison and kept up to date with their fundraising events and their fundraising efforts and events. I served on the district's Technology Curriculum Committee, the Playground Committee, the Selection Committee to Appoint Teacher and Support Staff Member of the Year, and the Committee to Select Mrs. Richards, our current principal at Deerfield Elementary. I serve also in the Negotiations Committee, and at this time, we are in the middle of negotiations to maintain a contract with the teachers. I'm an active listener and understand the magnitude of serving on the board in these economic times. I have enjoyed my contact with the parents, teachers, and administrative staff. Serving on the Board of Education is one more way that I can remain involved in my children's education and the community. It has been my privilege to serve on the board for the past three years, and thank you for considering me for reelection.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and now Ms. Parker.
Hi. I'm Jeannie Parker, and I would like to thank all of you for coming and also to the PTA for hosting us and to our moderator. Anne, if I could work this. My husband, Tom, and I have lived in Mountainside for seven years. Our daughter Kate is a Deerfield seventh grader who has thrived and taken full advantage of the many educational opportunities that this district provides. A basic function of a school board is to provide two-way communication with the community by informing the public about its schools. Therefore, I was encouraged this year to see the Mountainside Board of Education take steps towards a more active role in soliciting public input and sharing opinions about our district's needs, priorities, and goals. However, more needs to be done, particularly as we face the daunting challenge of figuring out how to continue to give our kids a quality education in the face of drastic funding cuts. If we want to continue to secure taxpayer support, the school board must make a genuine effort to reach out beyond the families with kids in our schools to actively include the -- and seek input from the many, many residents of Mountainside who are retirees, empty nesters, and people who don't have kids, whose support of this district is crucial. A lot has been made, both last year after the budget passed and this year during budget presentations, about how Mountainside was one of few schools in New Jersey or, you know, to pass its budget when, you know, half of them did not. But the reality is, is that last year's budget passed by just 83 votes. More than 47% of the voters rejected our budget. Compare that to a couple of years ago when the budget passed by more than 230 votes with only -- with about 37 people voting it down. I'm not, you know, a statistician, but it seems to me that the margin of approval we had last year is cause for concern, and I think that it would be dangerous of us to assume going forward that people are going to continue to come down the hill and give us money unless we can show them that we are doing the best with what they're giving us. Our budget problems have been exacerbated by, in my opinion, lax fiscal oversight. In recent years, we've had two serious accounting miscalculations regarding student headcount alone. One related to funding of special education students, and the most recent concerning the number of kids that we send to Governor Livingston was nearly a quarter of a million-dollar error, and it resulted in the single biggest line item increase in the newly proposed budget. As taxpayers, we deserve better from those entrusted with our school funds, and if elected, I would strive to help ensure that we are vigilant about and correctly account for every dollar we spend.
Ms. Parker? I'm going to have to ask you to stop. Thank you. Now, we're going to hear from Mr. Joya.
Thank you. I moved to Mountainside in 2006 with my family to take advantage of good schools, relatively low taxes, small-town community environment. I'm running for the Board of Education today to help reestablish the standards that influenced my decision to move to Mountainside. I believe the Board of Education is responsible for balancing fiscal responsibility and a high standard of educational excellence. As a parent with children from pre-K to second grade in a taxpayerless community, I'm fully invested in balancing those priorities. As a finance professional, I find the last two budgets as reactionary fixes to long-term problems. These long-term problems caused by inadequate planning, poor oversight of Governor Livingston, and accelerated use of reserves are threatening our taxes, threatening our property values, and threaten the value of our children's education. In the 2010 and 2011 school year and the 2011 and '12 school year combined, we will pay $450,000 of taxes beyond the 2% cap when compared to the '09-'10 tax base. Additionally, our classes are increasing. This year's budget shows an increase of 38%, 39%, and 31% respectively when we look at kindergarten, first and second grade compared to the '010-'011 budget. While state revenue has decreased, even if it was funded at the '09-'10 level, we'd be sitting here today facing a budget shortfall. Tax increases, reduction in service, pay-to-play co-curricular activity, and subscription busing has more than offset the decrease in state tax revenue. We need a roadmap for success in the form of a long-range plan. Negotiations, contracts, and new initiatives that fall outside that plan should be rejected unless we find corresponding offsets. We need strong oversight of Governor Livingston. We need to look at our spending and make sure there's nothing wasteful in there. We need consolidation. We need to investigate shared services and consider any alternative that benefits our taxpayers and benefits our children. As a finance professional with experience in negotiation, strategy, planning, and treasury, I bring of great value to this board that it currently lacks and historically lacks. I'm currently a VP of Finance. I've held CFO roles in a $100 million business and a $400 million division. I have an MBA from Rutgers University, and I'm active in the community as a member of the honorary PBA, the Mountainside, the Beechwood Garden Community, and coaching T-ball and soccer. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the final opening statement. We'll hear from Ms. Jakasitz.
Hi, I'm Kathy Jakasitz. I've been a member of the Board of Education for the past three years. I have a strong -- I have been a strong advocate for information sharing with the public and transparency of board proceedings. I have worked to ensure the community receives information necessary to be aware of where their educational system is going. I believe in bringing the community's educational views and feedback to the -- back to the decision-making process of the Board of Education. I offer 18 years of educational teaching experience to the district of Mountainside. I'm a graduate of Kane College, and I received my Bachelor's of Arts degree in Teacher of the Handicap. I've also received my Master's of Arts in Administration and Supervision while working in the public school system of Union, New Jersey. I've also completed a graduate program in Learning Disabilities Teacher Consultant, which is an LDTC, which is a member of one of the Child Study Team members, and I've completed another graduate program in School Counseling. As a 16-year resident, I am a mother of two sons, 12 and 10, who attend Deerfield School. Continuous evaluation of the academic curriculum to ensure an increase of achievement for all students has been one of my major functions on the board. Improved communications with school personnel, parents in the community, has been a major plate of mine. Continuous support of the current teacher-to-student ratio in all grade levels has always been a concern. Collectively evaluating the current needs of the school, students, and school personnel in an effort to create a balance with the current tax burden. My mission statement is I believe strongly that learning is a lifelong pursuit that takes place in the school, home, recreational, and social experiences. My mission is to ensure that quality education meets and exceeds the needs of each child of the district of Mountainside by maximizing the use of school and community resources. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move to the next portion where you will be asking questions of the candidates. I'd like to remind you that all audience questions and candidates' remarks must follow the League policy of being concerned with issues, not personalities, and the moderator will not allow any abusive, personal, or irrelevant questions or remarks. So, I welcome you to come to the podium, please, and give your name, and then briefly state your question.
I'm Scott Schmedel. I live on Deer Path. My question is for all of the candidates. The current board has proposed a budget that intends to maintain our superior system as we believe it to be, but is based on some unknowns, some things that we're not sure we know how we're going to deal with them. The two in particular are asking parents to pay for busing, and secondly, the contract negotiations that are currently in progress. We don't know, to the best of my knowledge, we don't know when we will have answers to how those things will turn out. So my question to each board member is, if those results are not as favorable as we hope they will be, what is your contingency plan? What will you do to make up for the lost revenue and/or increased expense? Thank you.
Okay. In one and a half minutes, you are going to have to come up with what would be your contingency plan if that board doesn't go. I'm going to start first with you, Ms. Jakasitz, and in one and a half minutes, can you pull that off?
I don't know. We'll see. In regards to busing, we actually are only saving $100,000. I know it, just to clarify some misinformation, it's not the $250,000 that has been mentioned a few times over. If we do not sit -- excuse me, if we do not utilize that and need to look at the lost revenue if this does not take place, as one board member, you don't have, excuse me, a say in any one particular area, but you do bring your ideas to the table. And I have to tell you, that's a really tough decision to make. I truly believe that foreign language, music, physical education, all of those things are just as important as the academic experience, so if you really have to go back and sit and look at that, those line items, that's going to be a very, very difficult process to do. I think right now, we're running as streamlined as I'd like us to see. I'm not even a fan of how streamlined we unfortunately have to be. So, without me stating some answers that I would love to throw out, I don't want to misrepresent what would actually have to take place. It's an easy question. It's not an easy answer. When you're sitting on the board, if I didn't have the board seat for three years, I would spear a ton of things. But knowing the issues that we have, that's tough, because really, what you're looking at is increasing class sizes, reducing teachers. You're looking at taking away some of the art programs. You're looking at the music programs. You're looking at even the extra facility -- I mean, excuse me, the organizations like Before and After and the play. Those things are a fortune. You're looking at...
Thank you.
Did I just stop mid-sentence? I thought you were finishing. So I don't want to see any of those things taken away, but before I make those statements of what I would like to take away compared to something else, I'd rather look at the whole and see where we can chip away instead of looking at one hole personally.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Well, right now, as I had mentioned in my opening, we are in the middle of negotiations, and you're right, Mr. Schmedel, we have no idea where that will take us at the moment. I know we are about to go into fact-finding, and as with many districts, they realize that there really is not extra money in the budget to be doing the things we had done in the past with regard to raises and all that kind of stuff. So, we will be looking, if we have to make up lost revenue, with obviously taking away, raising class sizes, and, you know, maybe having to cut some of the programs that we had held in reserve, the music, the world language, the things that our kids enjoy. Also, at this time, you can always, you know, expect maybe retirements during the end of the school year, and that would help this budget out if any of these other things didn't come to fruition.
Mr. Joya?
Yeah, I actually raised -- attempted to raise a similar question in a board meeting, and I'll add to that because we have one bigger unknown, which we won't know for a little while. That's what's really going to come to us from the state, because the number that's in the budget today is contingent on the Governor Christie's budget being passed, and that's a pretty significant number. But in regards to class sizes, I'm not a big fan of increasing class sizes. I think if this doesn't come through, we need to look at the small things. We have to look at the things that I'd raised questions about earlier. I know there's contract issues, and our superintendent gets $5,000. We have other administrators getting $1,000 or $2,000 a year that they can use. They, in good faith, they should forego that money. You should start right there. And depending how big the problem is, we have to look at downsizing our administration. That's going to affect our children less than increasing our class sizes. So for me, it's all about two things. It's finding the right balance between the finances and the children. And to think that the best thing to do is increase class sizes, to me, that doesn't make sense. But it's going to be about nickels and dimes. If you can find $5,000 in the superintendent's budget, you can find $2,000 in the principal's budget, and maybe $3,000 or $4,000 in the administrator's budget, doesn't sound like a lot, but it adds up. And I can guarantee you one thing. If you start looking at that, looking at it with a fine-tooth comb, you will find stuff. That I can guarantee. My last resort would be taking from the children.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Parker.
You know, I think I've said this at board meetings publicly before, but I'm not a big fan of asking parents to have to pay for busing or sports or that kind of thing, particularly when you've got families with, you know, a lot of kids in this town. But, that said, this is where it seems to be the best place to take the money from. And if the budget doesn't pass, like a couple of other candidates have said, we're going to have to take out a chisel and look to start chipping away at things that might seem small and inconsequential, but that eventually might, you know, give us a little bit more money. As far as contract negotiations, you know, I'll admit, I've not been a board member before, and I don't know the real true ins and outs of the process, but I would hope that when, you know, our teachers do sit down at the table and we get to a point where they are talking dollars and cents, that we could come to some kind of, you know, resolution and agreement that is going to be, you know, not take all the money out of their pockets, but also, you know, leave something, somehow, you know, that we could put something together that would be beneficial both to the kids and to the teachers without having to cut staff and resort to drastic measures that occur when a budget or a contract, you know, doesn't get passed.
Thank you. Let's move on. Do we have a second question? Oh, there's got to be questions.
All right. This is a key call. You're entitled. Can I finish my opening statement? No. Vanessa Rittman, 236 Kings Court. Mr. Joya, you just mentioned in your answer downsizing administration, and I've heard you say that before at other board meetings, and I'm curious exactly what you mean by downsizing administration.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Joya.
Yes. When you look at an organization in a whole, there's a couple of things you can do. You can look at the overhead. The overhead and the administration I'm talking about includes the things that are surrounding the superintendent's office, the business administrator's office, the -- I'm not exactly sure what we're considering, but what we assume are principles within our schools. And while those aren't great choices to downsize if you're downsizing people, there's significantly better choices than increasing the sizes of our classes. I already mentioned, we're increasing them 38% and 39% in some examples, and that might be okay for some people, but I don't know if the people who are making those decisions had children in those classes, they may be making the same decisions. So from my perspective, it's always better to cut the administration. The people that are touching the product, in this case, the product is our children, should be the last people we touch as far as downsizing. And again, we have contractual issues. There's $5,000 in the superintendent's budget for miscellaneous usage. In good faith, I would ask them to forego that. You're going to find a lot of small things across the board, and this is all public information. I could certainly point you to where these numbers are coming from if you need me to.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Sure. No. You might later, but not now. So, then, may I ask you, Ms. Parker, what your thoughts are on downsizing administration?
On downsizing administration? In my two-long opening remarks, I was going to note that the current board should be commended for its hiring of Mr. Saragne, who has, in a very few short months, done, you know, wonders with not a lot to work with, and he, you know, one of my, as far as administration, and I'm talking business administration, I've always wondered, why do we have a full-time business administrator? Why do we have an office that is staffed like that? In a very refreshing moment of candor the other night, Mr. Saragne is... In, in a very refreshing moment of candor the other night, Mr. Saragnes said, "Look, a town this big doesn't need a business administration office like we have been carrying for years and years." And to that, and he has himself cut his, his, his position down to three days, no more than three days a week next year, and made other slashes. So as far as the superintendent's office and, and that area of the administration, you know, I, looking at, if, if I looked at the contract, we could ma...
Okay, I have to stop. No, I don't, I have 30 seconds?
You know, maybe there are some things that we could whittle away, but there are contractual obligations, and without knowing exactly what those are and, and who they're mandated by, I, I wouldn't be able to make, you know, a real informed statement.
Thank you. Now we'll hear from Ms. Jackassis. What are your thoughts on downsizing administration?
I've been very open and very honest about my, my views of downsizing administration, and that has a twofold answer, actually. I'm not a fan of sharing services with the superintendent, we lose our autonomy that way. We have no say. We'd only have two members on the board in Berkeley Heights, they would have their seven. So ultimately, we'd have almost no say. But saying that, our superintendent here is also our principal. So that, that position and how it's worked out can run this school. The principal over Deerfield is ran, oh my goodness, with the part-time guidance counselor, is as thin as possible, that would be beneficial to our children. Where we could cut is with curriculum, because also, our principal is also a curriculum person, also very knowledgeable. There's a fine line with that, that we can definitely utilize it, but when you have a principal who's ran at such a, ooh, sleek level of, of doing her job without extra, much extra time at all to do anything else, that's a fine line. But curriculum is if you're going to downsize in the administration area, that would be a position that could actually take place. It could, oh, it could have obviously beneficial effects financially, of course. We'd have to see the ramification of the curriculum aspect, which has been a huge issue in the past, which we no longer have due to our curriculum and the constant changes that have been in a huge positive effect on our children.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, your thoughts?
I'm, I'm looking at our structure right now, and we have our chief school administrator, who does act as principal here at, at this school, who, in her role of chief school administrator, is off-campus quite a bit, which is where Mr. Conroy does step in, who is our supervisor of curriculum. I go back many years to when our test scores really weren't that good here in Mountainside, and Rich O'Malley came in as the superintendent and said, "Look, you know, you need to have a supervisor of curriculum, somebody needs to update..." Our curriculum we were using was very old in this district. And with Mr. Conroy, I think it was Mr. Carter first and Mr. Conroy, we have watched our test scores rise in this district to where New Jersey, Best Places to Live, Mountainside, was in this magazine, and it was due a lot to the school district. They quoted the school district as being one of the top here in New Jersey. I would be reluctant to cut curriculum in a, in an administrative role. We do run really lean, as Kathy said. We have a, a part-time guidance counselor now, a principal over at Deerfield. We have Dan, who is streamlining the business office. He did find a way to save us some costs there. So we are working with streamlining what we can in administrative without detrimenting our position in this district with our education of our children.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Rittman, if you would like to, do you still want to do a follow-up? Okay. Think about it. Is there another question from the floor, please?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Burney on 1131 Ridge Drive. My initial question is directed at Kathy Jackassis, but from there on, I'd like everyone to weigh in. At the February 8th roundtable, I, that we were talking about with the big whiteboard of cutting costs, about different ways to cut costs. And one of the comments, and I can't say for sure, but that you had brought up, was that salaries are contractual, which is true, but we need to make sure that our teachers are able to afford to live in this community.
Well, you're misquoting me, but...
I'm just...
That's the gist, actually.
Okay, if that's the gist, then that's kind of...
Well, no, I could actually state...
Can we propose the question?
I would like you to elaborate on that, and then...
I'm actually very glad you asked that question.
Ms. Jackassis, can we wait to get the question, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And then, for each one of the board members to also weigh in on their thoughts on the teacher salary negotiation that is going on to the best that they can without divulging any information.
Okay, so... The question is, you want addressed, is that you want a discussion of the salary negotiations, or what?
My viewpoint, I think, is it, Marilyn, is it my viewpoint of what I had stated at the roundtable about the teachers being able to live here in Mountainside? And that's their salary, should be based on that, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
The teacher's salary is sufficient to live in Mountainside?
Well, that's, I guess, the gist of the question.
That's the gist of the question, that's the issue. All right. Now, Ms. Jackassis, could you address that?
Certainly. I'm actually glad you said that, because so many people have asked me about that, and they said they couldn't hear exactly what I was stating. What I had stated, when, I don't remember the gentleman's name who brought up, "Teachers make too much money, we've got to stop paying them so much, et cetera, et cetera." And what my exact words were, or my exact intentions at that point, were saying, teacher, I said, "You have to be careful, because teachers, after working for 30 years, are making $60,000 to $70,000," and that's with advanced degrees. It's not that they're making, someone said that, "I thought they were making $60,000 now." No, that's not correct. It's 20 to 30 years to be able to make that salary. So when we keep cutting and cutting and chipping away at teachers' salaries, who is going to go into teaching? Do you think anyone who is going to go into college and know that you can make X amount of money leaving college and start at $50,000, $60,000? Or you can know that you can only make $50,000 to $60,000, $70,000 after working 30 years? If you keep chipping away at that, I got to tell you, I don't know if you're comfortable with that. I am absolutely not comfortable with who is going to go into education, what qualifications we're going to get coming out of education, to then be educating our children. They have to make enough money to live, live well, live in areas that they're comfortable in, that they're secure in, so they can actually function and think about our children when they come here every day. So my statement was, after that period of time, they're only making those salaries. And most teachers do it for the absolute love of what they do. So when we, we say that as such a blanket statement so many times, so I just wanted to put it out there, no one is rich by any stretch of the nation, stretch of imagination. I can see the yellow card. I was, I was paying attention for my closing on that one. So that's exactly what was stated.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Joya, can you address the teacher's salary, the level of teacher's salary? Is it adequate?
Yes. I think the, the subject of teacher's salaries is a touchy point. We certainly want to have very qualified teachers, we, we want them fairly paid, but really, the question is, what's fair? Teachers go into teaching for a lot of different reasons. I don't know a lot of them who've gone into teaching to make a lot of money. So, you know, typically, they like to, to spend time with, with the kids, or they love what they do, or they love the fact that they have the summers off. That doesn't mean we should underpay them. But there are definitely some things that have happened over the last 20 years in this state that have created an imbalance in what our teachers expect and what our taxpayers can afford. And that's really something we're going to have to figure out. You've all heard the arguments about benefits. Everybody's benefits are going up. I, I've paid more benefits in one paycheck than they do in a year, so it's a little difficult for me sometimes to listen to the fact that they're not getting enough in the form of benefits. So it's really a question of equity. You certainly don't want to underpay them, but we do have people in private sectors that make a lot less money, they're qualified, and they're doing a fine job teaching our children also.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Okay, at, at the risk of alienating my friends who are teachers, who are very funny, I, I do believe in, in many instances, that, that teachers are fairly paid, but I also do believe that if economic times warrant it, that they should be subject to the same kind of increases that, that those of us who work in the private sector are. That said, the amount of money that we are spending that, on state healthcare benefits, I think is alarming, and they're going up almost 9% this year for, for this district. And, and I would, would like to see a situation where, you know, there is some kind of pay-in for that, or in, in the alternative, that we find some other, you know, method of paying for that, whether it be being in a PPO, or I would, but I would like to see some, some cost-sharing on that. And I also believe that a lot of, you know, the money that we pay, some of the money that we pay, could be alleviated by, by tenure reform, which I strongly, strongly support. And I think it would be, allow us to keep the good teachers, and based on merit, and, and those that, that want to leave, or that we are not satisfied with and are costing us money, we could, we could get rid of.
Thank you.
Not that we have those in this town, but there might be one or two, I don't know.
Thank you. Ms. Williams, can you address the level of teacher's salary?
Yes. You know, when, when you add in the medical benefits, a teacher starting here in Mountainside makes almost $70,000 a year, working 180 days, getting their, you know, summers off and their vacations. I would have loved to have come straight out of, you know, college and started with that. It, it, it's, it's a good start, and I do know that as they go on and continue their education, which we allow them to here in Mountainside, if you notice, every board meeting, we are paying for teachers to continue their education, and as they continue their education, they move up the, the step guide. So they do have the potential to, to make a very good living here in Mountainside. They do do a wonderful job, the teachers, and I know that it is one of the hardest jobs that we can do. I mean, I am a preschool teacher, I have to come home, I have to do my lesson plans, I have to go grocery shopping on the weekends, I have to plan crafts and activities, and I do a lot of that from home and in my spare time. But you do get a level of enjoyment if you're doing a good job and you love the kids, and, you know, it's just, it, it benefits yourself and the children to take that extra time and do that. And, you know, I think, I think that they, they do make a good living here in Mountainside.
Thank you. We have built into this an additional 30-second follow-up if someone felt they needed it. And Ms. Jackassis, would you like to take an opportunity for a follow-up for 30 seconds?
I guess the only follow-up I would have is, when the statement that come in, come out making $70,000 a year, you can take that to anyone's salary in any sector and put $15,000 to $20,000 on, on top of their salaries. So although that sounds amazing, that is what we're spending, but every other company is also spending. So what their take-home with their salaries actually is substantially less than that. So just to reiterate that, but their salaries when they're walking out here is not $50,000, it's what we're paying.
It's 54, and then plus their benefits.
I'm saying, what they're receiving is not 70. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Ms. Williams, would you like 30 seconds to...
Well, you know, they're also not having to take out of their pay $600 a month to pay for their medical and, and then their dental, their dental. So, you know, that's what, what the, and, you know, going into the private sector, you know, I'll, I'll use my husband as an example. 3:00 in the morning, he had to get in his car and go to work for three hours. He gets phone calls, he works weekends, he works till 11:00 at night on a salary. So, you know, there is the pros and cons of why they choose to be teachers, a lot of them, the love of the kids, of course, but also the schedule. I mean, it is a fantastic schedule, so you have to look at it that way, too.
Mr. Joya would also like 30 seconds to...
Yes, I'd like to support Ms. Parker's comment on tenure reform. In this year's school budget, there's $420,000 reduction in salaries. It's part of the reason why our class sizes are increasing, but if you actually look at the line item detail on that budget, you won't see a penny coming out of it. Because what we're doing is, we're getting rid of some of the lower-paid teachers as required by law, and bringing back some of the higher-paid teachers that have been out of, been, been out of work for, on their own volition for various reasons.
Did you want, or you were going to pass?
I'm, I'm just going to pass.
Okay, thank you. It's a tough one. Is there another question that we can address?
Hi, Linda Condillo, 1327 Wood Valley Road, where the speed limit is 25 miles an hour every day. My question is, well, first I want to say, we live in a great community, we've got obviously...
Just, can we go to the question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Got card up yet. Would the board, in a yes or no answer, just let, let the public know, if it came down to pay for play, sports and clubs and plays, or cutting sports and plays and clubs altogether, how would you vote?
I think we can ask for yes, more than yes or no. We'll start with you, Ms. Williams. What would...
You know, Dan brought out a very good page in the budget last week that did show what we would be paying as parents for our kids to continue to play sports under the school umbrella, as well as to continue with the play, the yearbook, the clubs. I did, you know, in looking at it, it was $200 to be on yearbook, because there are 16 kids that participate in that, where it would be $40 to be in the clubs, where I think 116 kids or 108 participated in that. If you merge those two together and added the, the money, it would be $50 for children in Mountainside to stay involved in the yearbook and on all clubs. I think sports were $426 a sport per season per child. I would say in these economic times that we do have to go to the, to the parents of the children that are going to be participating in these, rather than putting the burden on the tax, the additional taxpayers, the seniors in town, the nesting, empty nesters, or people who haven't had children yet. And, you know, when I look at it, at first, the 426 for a sport was a real shocker, because of course, we've played under our schools for free. But when I look back, and my daughter's been in dance, and that's $2,000 a year, and the horse-riding up at the stables is, you know, nine or 10, 900 a year to 1,000, plus the uniforms, 426 doesn't sound quite so bad. And then they get their team spirit and the pride of the school to, to maintain those. So I would say to keep them, but have the parents do, do the paying.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Can I just clarify, was the question, if it came down to a vote, would I vote for pay-to-play or none at all? Is that the question, Linda?
Yes, but then explore your thoughts on it.
Okay, my, my answer is, if, if it came down to cutting it all out entirely or having pay-to-play, I would pick pay-to-play in a minute, because there is more to an education, especially at the age that our kids are in, in, at least in these two schools, than just simply learning, and I'm not discounting reading, writing, arithmetic, the whole thing, but to raise well-balanced and well-rounded kids, you have to have some kind of other outlet, or at least try to have it. And yes, I think, and I said this at a meeting previously, families who have, you know, several kids are going to have a really tough time coming up with 400 bucks per, 400 something per sport, 80 bucks for band, 200 bucks for yearbook. I mean, my cost alone for my child, if you add in the bus, would be something like 1,500 bucks for everything that she does. So times that by two or three kids, it's a lot of money. But I do think that right now, if it is our only option, we should continue to provide that option, because it, I, it's essential to, to, you know, giving these kids a really well-rounded education.
Thank you. Mr. Joya?
Yeah, I would certainly vote for pay-to-play. It's not the, the option I wish we, we had today, but you certainly want to give the parents the choice to decide what they're going to do. I wouldn't for a second downplay what the costs are. I have three kids, so if I want to send them to co-create their activity and send them on the bus, my wife's going to have to go to work. But, you know, it's a tough decision, and the reality of it is, we shouldn't be here. And that's what we really need to think about. It's, it's a tough decision we're making, it's unfortunate, there's people in our community who probably can't afford this and would love to have their kids in these programs. And it's really a shame that we allowed it to get where it is today.
Okay. Ms. Jackassis?
Yes, obviously, I would choose pay-to-play prior to nothing. And hopefully, when we get monies back, if that happens, we can continue the sports. So it would be a seamless issue. But I know in my district alone, I had brought to meetings, both executive and public, that when you have a community of teachers who feel very comfortable, very respected, very much part of the process of an educational system, it's amazing what those teachers will do. We had last year, I think it was 75 clubs that the teachers ran in our school, before school, after school, it was peer tutoring, teacher tutoring, it was amazing, all for free. Not one of those people were paid. There were other stipends for different aspects and different jobs, obviously, yearbook being one of them. But we had that many teachers want to volunteer their time to give before school, after school, and those teachers were getting up and leaving their house at 5:30, 6:00 in the morning to do this, actually, and to stay up until 5:00, 6:00 at night, many, many a day, for absolutely nothing. So I think there's also a thing, if we don't have that here, let's look at why. Why are our teachers, maybe, maybe we've never broached the subject, I don't know. Let's broach the subject and see where it goes, and if we broach the subject and it doesn't go anywhere, let's find out why. Let's broach the subject and see where it goes, and if we broach the subject and it doesn't go anywhere, let's find out why. Let's see why they wouldn't want to do something like that. So I think that, to me, is a huge issue that I would like to explore. Thank you.
Thank you. You'd like to have a thirty-second follow-up?
Sure, and this is not to rebut Kathy by any means, but I, there are some teachers, your kids are younger, I think, but there are teachers in the older grades that do, in the specials particularly, who come in early, who, you know, go above and beyond for band, who have breakfasts, who do do that and unasked and of their own volition. And I would bet, like you say, that if we asked, there would probably be more teachers who would do that.
Oh, actually, I'm not even.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you would like thirty seconds, you may have it.
Oh, I agree, there's plenty of teachers that come in after and before. I'm actually saying, we have an environmental club. She does it for free. We have a recycling club, it's done for free. We have peer tutoring, we have peer, tons of things, all for free. These are clubs actually posted just coming in. I mean, I know I'm there at seven-thirty, quarter after seven every morning, just to help kids, and that's amazing. But there are a lot of things teachers do do in a lot of other towns that, like I said, maybe we just haven't asked them to. I don't really know, but I would love to explore that.
Anybody else? Oh, all right. Thank you then for that question. And do we have another questioner? Oh, come now. If there's someone else over there that I can't see that hasn't spoken, we'd like to bring them in and get their question.
Good evening, Christina Nixon, Summit Road. Initially, my question is directed to Mr. Joya because it seems to me, in reading all the bio-information that you have, you come from an extensive business background. Many companies base their salary advancement and career advancement on performance reviews. And I'm curious what your perspective is on treating tenure in that respect, based on the children's performance, the teacher's performance in the classroom.
Okay. Mr. Joya, would you like to address teachers' performance reviews?
Absolutely, I'm a big fan of that. It's, I don't think it's something we're gonna solve in our boardroom, but it's a much bigger issue that's a problem across the state. You know, certainly, teachers should be awarded when they take the next step and they educate themselves into great teachers. I do think we have some teachers that, instead of having twenty years' experience, they have one year experience twenty times. And that's not the, that's not the teacher I want in my classroom, in my children. So certainly, performance-based tenure, that's another question, but we should definitely look at performance-based. Our children are the product. If you were making clothes and the clothes weren't good, it wouldn't sell and you'd be out of business. We're in the business of creating intelligent children. And if our children can't perform, well, you know, our teachers should be penalized for that.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, can you address performance review for teachers?
I think in, I think that if there would were a system of, a new, some tenure reform, that that would have to be one aspect of it. I don't think that is straight across the board, basing something on teacher test scores. If your performance is based solely on how well your kids learn, because I think that that is a little bit more subjective rather than objective. But I do think that there are many teachers, regardless whether their diplomas are written in pen and ink or they're fresh off the laser printer, that bring a lot, I just, what my concern is, is that if you have people that are in the system because they've been around forever, that's not necessarily the best teacher. Sometimes a person who's been here for fifteen minutes is good, and sometimes a person who's been here forever. And I just think that if we had some kind of performance, maybe merit, achievement, it'd have to be, it needs to be a combination of things for, that is what I think.
Thank you. Ms. Jakossis, can you address that?
Yeah, can you restate the question again, please?
Yes, it's.
It's been two different ways, that's why, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Your thoughts on performance review for teachers?
Okay. Performance review for teachers are a wonderful concept. My only negative with it, and I speak from experience, not because I've gotten one, but just experience in the sense that I'm an educator. If you're tenure, you only get one review, that's it. And that one review is based on your entire performance of what you do in the course of a year. I luckily have never had, I've always had exceptional reviews, so I'm not referring to me personally. But I know teachers who can walk in a classroom and the kids are off the wall for whatever reason. It's the day before a spring break, it's whatever is coming in, or there's going to be an assembly, or they just came back from assembly. I'm not a fan of that one review. Prior to that, a non-tenure teacher has three reviews, or two reviews during the course of the year. So I'm much more a fan of that, and I'm very much a fan of performance reviews. I just think we need more than just one of those and make that more, I know we revamped our evaluation process quite extensively here, and I'm much more a fan of the new evaluation process than the old because it takes into account many more facets of what a teacher does in a classroom. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes. Piggybacking off what Kathy was saying, we did update our evaluation system, recognizing that we had kind of antiquated forms in the sense that you could just put a little tick mark and everything was satisfactory. And we went to a more inclusive form where everything actually had to be stated, whether the teacher could handle the classroom, whether the teacher was providing the lesson, whether she was sticking to the core, here she was sticking to the core curriculum. So with these updated evaluations, we do get a better grasp of what our teachers are doing in the classroom. But I have to say, I do believe in merit pay. I do believe that there are teachers out there that do go above and beyond what they're asked to do. And they do it because of their love of teaching, their love of the classroom and the children. And it would be great to be able to build in to a system merit pay based on their performances and their evaluations.
Thank you. If there's no more on that one, may we have another question from the audience?
You ready?
Okay.
You're being very polite.
If nobody else has one, we'll go to this gentleman again.
Scott Schmadel, and I'm going to follow up on something that Mrs. Rittman brought up before, and that is the idea of shared services. I think Mr. Sargneze has done a great job in managing the business office and the office of the Board Secretary. And I have no doubt that Dr. Bobbles is doing the very best she can, even though we may not see such outstanding results openly as we have with the business office. But the question keeps being raised of shared services.
Okay, so you're going to ask them?
About how do they feel first about sharing the services of the chief administrator? And how do you feel about considering, or exploring, let's put it that way, consolidation with another school system?
Those are two distinct questions.
They are, they are parts of the same question.
Well, I think we, we'll go with shared services and particularly with chief administrator first, okay? And I think, may I start with you, Ms. Williams, on that one?
I would not recommend that we share chief school administrator. I do have the privilege of being liaison to the board up at Governor Livingston. And I do know that being consolidated with them, we would lose our feel of Mountainside down here. We would not have a say in anything that would go on. We'd have two people be allowed to sit on their board of seven. And it wouldn't matter how you voted or what you felt down here, it would never pass up there. They would have control over us, and we really wouldn't have a say in it. Shared services is a great outlet to explore, but as we have explored it already in a few instances, we don't have a lot to offer in another district. We're very small, and when a larger district comes to us, they'd like to fund their programs on our backs. And some of the things that they have proposed to us have ended up being more than what we're paying down here. So we really have to be careful when we look at shared services. Consolidation is not something I would be recommending at all.
Mr. Joya, can you address the?
Yeah, first I want to apologize, Ms. Rittman, if I didn't answer your question earlier. I see consolidation within the district, I see shared service within, with different towns. My opinion of shared service, I don't believe in wholesale shared service. I do think we should investigate it. We are the only state in the country, from what I believe, from what I understand, that runs their schools at this level, and that's the reason for our high taxes. So it's really a question for the taxpayers. If you want to continue to pay high taxes, we could certainly continue to manage at this micro-level. But if you want to do what the rest of the world and the rest of the countries do, and it's managed slightly different. And I hate to say this, but it's not like we're a leader in educating our children. We're not the best in the country, and the country's far from the best in the world. So there are better ways to do this. As far as home rule's concerned, you have to investigate it. You can't just jump into this blindly, you can't have it mandated. We've had two governors from different parties, and Corzine and Christie, they've been pushing this issue. You see consolidation today down in Gloucester County. And I do believe if we don't look at this and potentially find alternatives long run for ourselves, we won't be able to afford it as taxpayers, and someday, our legislator might mandate it on us. That's my concern.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, can you address it?
Yes. I agree to some extent with what Mr. Joya just said, but I do, in theory, believe in shared services. I think it is something that should definitely be explored. However, it would have to be very well researched because I wouldn't want this district to find itself in the position of being the stepchild or the person who is, comes second in a shared service environment. But I do think that a school board has a responsibility to the community, if that's what the community wants, to look at it. And I do think it would be very unfortunate, and you brought up, you know, Governor Corzine trying to mandate it. It would, I would rather look at it independently than have it thrust upon us by the state and maybe end up being merged or sharing services with a district that is just not going to be beneficial to us, that we don't have any interest in sharing services with. And I would rather, if it came, excuse me, down to it, that we have a choice in who, with whom we're sharing services.
Thank you. Ms. Jakossis, would you address?
Certainly. Sharing services is obviously such a smart choice, but it has to be done smartly, like Mrs. Parker has stated. We actually do share quite a bit of services here for such a small town. We share with our municipalities, with plowing, et cetera. We share our services with the special education department in the sense that the director there is only a three-day-week person. Our administration office is obviously shared in the business end of it. Shared service is wonderful, but I know we've been looking at and trying to look at to outsource our own services. Let's do something with the curriculum director, maybe we can get him outsourced, so we can start pulling money in. I'd like to start looking at that. Let's take our services that we currently have here, let's outsource them, so we're making money, so we don't have to share our services in the sense of cutting them, but if anything, we can make money from what we do have. Along with the CSA, yeah, it's a quick fix for that price tag, actually. But like, to me, the roundtable was such a wonderful example of why we want to keep in-house a CSA. The roundtable's discussions from so many of the members of our community, which was amazing, is the resulting budget that we came to with, you know, in the last few weeks. You guys, really, if you haven't noticed, decided where we chose to make our cuts. We just, we listened to our public and we really tried to empathize and utilize that knowledge and concern that you had to implement in our current budget. So I'm very much hoping it actually passes, since we really took your advice, your opinion, your thoughts and your concerns very much into account. So there's negatives and positives to everything, and we agree, you have to look five, six steps down the line before you make choices, obviously.
We can have thirty, additional thirty-second follow-up, but we also can move to the second part of that question. Would you like to follow up, Mr. Joya, first?
And I think it's important, we talk about shared service, that we understand a couple of key facts. If we do it, if you investigate, it has to be like towns. Those towns have to have the similar values that we do as far as education and as far as our future's concerned. On top of that, and I mentioned home rule before, this does not have to be structured in a way that we lose control. As far as I know, Delaware's not looking to concede from the nation. If done properly, you can have the proper level of control and oversight. And as part of a small district moving into a larger organization, you should benefit from scaling. But you can't do it if you lose control, because then you will have a really big problem.
Thanks. Anyone else want to follow up on that? Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to follow up what Mr. Joya said about us not having, you know, the best education. I have lived in many countries, different countries and a lot of different states, and by far, this is the best education that I have seen in my travels, you know, as far as what our children get here in this metropolitan New York City area. So, you know, we do benefit from living in this, in this great town.
Thank you. Ms. Jakossis, I would like to start with you and do the second part of that. And would you differentiate, please, between shared services and what the potential for consolidation is? What are your views on consolidation?
Yeah, I did actually address shared services and CSA. With consolidation, that was a very strong concern just two to three years ago. The prior governor was very much pushing consolidation. And once you truly consolidate, all of your autonomy is now gone, obviously. And obviously, would be consolidated either with another town our size or a larger town. The wave seemed to have been a larger town. So when you take a small-town entity and put it in a larger town, well, that's what you're getting, obviously. And most of us, I know myself, I moved here because of the small town. I grew up in a large town, and I liked that small-town concept because I went to a Catholic school. So I liked that small-town community feel in that, and I wanted to do that, but with public school funding. And I think that is the jewel of this town, and consolidation would take that jewel and make this yet just another town, so.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, would you, for one and a half minutes now?
As far as exploring consolidation, it's not something that I would want to do, but given the current financial environment, there are a lot of things that I may not want to do that we all have to do. And that's something, you know, both as a school district and in our daily lives. However, again, going back to who you would have to merge with, I don't want to see this town consolidate unless it is on the kind of terms that we're getting something for it, our kids are getting something for it, and it is beneficial to the taxpayers of this town. I mean, if it's just the kind of, you know, oh, my gosh, we have to do this and we're gonna end up in some, you know, district that we don't feel is on par with ours, then it's not something that I would like to see us doing.
Thank you. Mr. Joya, would you discuss the concept of consolidation?
Again, it's something that politicians from both parties are pushing. It's a lot of the reason why you saw Christie pull back on the funding to the districts. We have very high taxes here. Consolidation is something that's needed, it's seen at the highest levels. We've had people from different parties that are saying the exact same thing. At some point, it's gonna happen. So we certainly have to be proactive and try to take a step forward. And to the extent possible, we need to do as much of it on our terms as that we can. And otherwise, I think it's wholesale, reactive, consolidation, shared service, whatever you want to call it, those aren't the terms that I want for our school.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes, I don't see the budget benefits to consolidating, especially if we consolidate into a large town like Berkeley Heights. I have been sitting on that board now for three years, and as many of you know, their budget did not pass last year. And they had to make more drastic cuts after they had really cut everything that they really wanted to last year. They had to cut another nine hundred and, I think, forty-three thousand dollars from their budget when the town came back to them. This year, they're, you know, they've once again cut. They have cut all middle-school sports, whereas us as a town are looking at pay-to-play and keeping them in the school. They've cut many things, their media specialists, they've gone to one media- Their media specialists, they've gone to, one media specialist between two schools up there. We've maintained our media specialist. I don't see the benefit of being under the umbrella of a larger district. They still are having their budget crisis, as do we. And they are losing a lot more, because they have a lot more to fund. If we consolidate with them and we lose our chief school administrator, they're thinking, great, we save X amount of dollars. But they're going to have to hire another assistant chief school administrator, because I know Judy and Pat are already pushed to capacity. So you're really not saving a whole lot of money, and you're not benefiting from the budget that you would think you would.
Did you want 30 seconds follow up?
Just to address something that Mr. Joya brought up. You know, I would rather, I mean, I think it's a good idea that we look further down, you know, past next year, the year after that, the year after that. Because you're right, eventually, someone's going to say, here it is, consolidation's on the table. And I would rather drive the change than be driven by it. And I do think that it is something we have to think that's on the horizon and, you know, and look at the options.
Yes.
Yeah, two things. First off, I think the benefit is reduced taxes. There's a reason why we have the highest taxes in the nation. That's been documented. And the other benefit is better educational system. I'm not stating something that, as in a matter of record, you can certainly look at educational journals and look at the way our children are performing against other states and see that we are not at the top of that list. So between the benefits of better education for my children and lower taxes for my community, I think it's something we should investigate on our terms.
Ms. Jakossis?
Yes, if I wasn't a board member, and if I wasn't coming to the meetings, I might not know this, but due to the consolidation issues that came up my first year here, we have actually utilized that same mind frame. We need to drive it here before it's driven to us. And we have actually been working actually to do that in the last three years I know that I've been on the board. And we've done that, our special ed department, wow, tremendously. We've cut that down tremendously. And again, I had stated before that our special ed department, the director, which, oh, my God, I think is the hardest position in any school system with the laws that change. Oh, my God, it almost seems like, oh, it's only a minute and a half.
No, it's only 30 seconds.
Oh, 30 seconds, darn, I can't do that 30 seconds.
Would you like to finish for her?
No, no. No, because, yeah, no. Well, no. Can I have your 30 seconds? Yeah, you can have my 30 seconds. I was losing my train of thought listening to you, so I can't, sorry.
No, no.
No, no, I'm kidding.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're going to have to move on to another question. It's tough. We have a cheerleader in the audience who's like to, no. We're going to have, we're going to listen to Ms. Rittman pose the question.
For the incumbents, Kathy and Carolyn, you've been on the board a number of years, and you know the dedication and the volunteer work. This is volunteer work, after all. You have families, you have jobs. Can you estimate how much time over, say, a month, you put into the work that you do for our Board of Education?
Ooh, this month?
And then, and then, and then could the-
That's my part-time job.
And then could Mr. Joya and Ms. Parker answer in terms of how you see that fitting into your lifestyle with your jobs and your family?
All right, we'll start then with Ms. Jakossis. Your time and energy commitment to the job of Board of Education.
Well, at least the meetings, when I first got on, it was two meetings a month, every month. We have taken 12 meetings. Excuse me, I've taken most of those per month down to one meeting a month, and there's only four months that there is two. So that did make a nice little break there. But, yeah, there's definitely some months, more than others, that it is a full, it's almost a full part-time job that you can spend a tremendous. I think the last two weeks, I have not been going to bed earlier than midnight. And Jeannie knows, I'm a 10 o'clocker, because I'm up at 5:30 in the morning. Literally, every single night with phone calls and emails, et cetera, et cetera. But then there's months that, you know, everything flows very smoothly and things are going well. Then it's not that much more past the meetings a month. And then the committees that you sit on and whatever that would entail is different per committee. So once you jump in here, obviously, most people, prior to putting their name in the hat, really probably overestimate the time, because they realize, wow, it's a huge commitment, which is a good thing, and I think you need to do that. So, but once you get in here, you know, your commitment is so strong that whenever I make a decision, I know I want to be so informed prior to making that decision. I'm willing and very much wanting to put all that extra time in. So I'm very comfortable with my decision when it comes to the board. Good question, though.
Ms. Williams, your thoughts on your-
Yes, I guess you could ask my husband. How often have I been home this month, honey? Not much. I do sit on Governor Livingston's board as well. And due to the budget crisis that they had last year, I think I've done six or seven nights till midnight over the last two months, and then quite a few here. Doing your homework as well, I sit on negotiations. And, you know, those meetings can come in the middle of the day. They can go till 11 o'clock at night as well. I am very fortunate, I work part-time, and I can do a lot of it during the afternoons. But it is, it does take away from your family, it is very demanding. My son just said to me this evening, where are you going again tonight? And I said, well, you know, back to the Board of Education. But they know that you do it with their best interest at heart. And, you know, like I said, it is a way for me to keep abreast of what's going on in our schools and what my children are involved in. And, you know, when you add in that you go to, you know, I hope all of us will be going to the science fair this weekend. I went up to teen arts, and you do the things that, the events, the Fall Festival for the PTA, the fashion show, all the fun is what you also have to be involved in, because that is why you're sitting on the Board of Education. It's for those fun moments as well as sitting through the meetings.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, would you address how you're going to fit this into your lifestyle?
Okay, you know, I would imagine that you would probably spend 40, 50 hours a week, I mean, 40, 50 hours a month as a board member. Maybe that's not enough, maybe that's too many. But this is something that I've been mulling, doing pretty much since I first moved to town. And I didn't do it in the past, because I have a job that, you know, until recently, I could drop my kid off at school and be in another country or another state by noon and not come back maybe before dinner, or maybe not come back for two weeks. So as far as my family's concerned, they're kind of, I'm just kind of peripheral sometimes. Not really. But I do now have the benefit of having a more structured work environment, where I don't travel very much. And I am the kind of person who runs on sometimes just pure energy. And I have more than, I would not do this if I didn't have the time to put into it.
Thank you. Mr. Joya, how will you fit this into your lifestyle?
That's a good question. You know, volunteering always takes a lot of time. And the decision to run for the board was a difficult one for me. I work in New York, and I understand this is a big commitment, but it's something that I felt I had to do for a number of reasons. One, I felt we really needed the financial leadership on our board. And the second thing, I felt not only did I owe it to the community and my neighbors from that perspective, but I owed it to my children. And if I certainly can't find time for my community, my neighbors, and my children, then I really should question the choices I make in life. So although I know this is going to be a great amount of time that I'm going to spend to make the right decisions, it's something that I feel is the right thing for me.
Well, thank you. That was an interesting question.
Can I just?
Sure. 30 seconds.
No, I just wanted to thank people even for coming out to do this. This is not an easy decision to make, and I really applaud your being here and making that decision. Because I know even when I had one last time, I'm like, oh, my God, do I really want to do this? Because you get scared, like, the time, oh, my God. So I applaud you tremendously. So thank you all for putting the time in.
If there are no more questions, yes, would you?
Hi, my name is Linda Zemfeller from Woodland Avenue. I just have two small questions. One, you keep referring to class size. What is the current class size? And the other question is, the fees that you talk about, the $40, the $50, the $426 for the children's sports, how do you arrive at those fees? Is there a stated formula that comes from business administrators, or exactly how was that feat set? Thank you.
Okay, I think we can deal with that in one and a half minutes. I'm going to start with you, Ms. Williams, because you're an incumbent and you know what is going on currently. So how is class size determined? What is it? How is it determined? And how are the fees arranged? What formula?
Well, the class sizes are determined by how many tracks we need for each class. This year, the class sizes did go up. In some classes, we, you know, have, I think, 25, as much as 25 kids. I did write my chart down that was on the board, but I didn't bring that. But, you know, 25 kids in a classroom, as long as you've got good teachers in the front of the classroom, is very doable. How we arrived at the formula for the fees for the-
Pay-to-play.
For pay-to-play and the clubs and everything was, we do have a line item in our budget that says, you know, sports cost us last year with transportation, uniforms, you know, $27,000, I'm just saying. And then we divided it by the amount of kids that played that sport. That's why sports are, you know, so high. We, clubs, we did the same thing. What it costs the stipends for the teachers and divided it by the amount of kids that are in it. And that's how we came out to our formula. That's why yearbook ended up being $200, because only 16 children participated. So, you know, that does come as a formula from the business office.
And thank you. Ms. Parker, can you discuss class size, your thoughts on it?
Sure, I was going to say, I think she kind of answered. The class size is going up this year, or is slated to. While I don't think that that is an ideal situation, I certainly don't think it's an unmanageable situation. I would say that most of us in this room who grew up in the 60s or 70s or even before, I always had 25 or 30 kids in my class, and I didn't even think anything about it. I do think that there have been some concerns by parents about the disruption that it might cause. And I think that that is a perfect time, this would be a perfect time for the board to go over, and the administration to go over with every family, the state mandated and the board policies regarding student conduct and pupil discipline. Because really, there, if you've got a good teacher, and we have teachers who can handle those kids in the classroom, coupled with, you know, a real understanding of what the rules are in school, I don't think the discipline, yes, it might be a bit of a problem, but I don't think it's going to be, you know, an unmanageable problem. And if this is what we've got to do, that's it. You know, it's not like we're going up to 30 kids in a class.
Okay. Ms. Jakossis, can you address class size and fee formulas?
Well, the fee formula, I would not want to actually comment on it. I'd rather put that out to Dan Saragines, because I wouldn't. He's the one who's created that formula, and he's the one who's created the scenario and the line item for that one. But class size, yes, was on a whole roughly 20 to 21 and is going up to 25. This year, we do have a fifth-grade class of 25 currently, excuse me, sixth-grade class. I think what Ms. Parker said was very much on key. We definitely can give our teachers more training for behavioral. I know some of my classes are up to 29 and 30, where I am. Luckily, I've had a tremendous amount of training for behavior, and I don't have a problem. I'm very fortunate. So knowing that the class sizes are going up, and we did have a discussion on professional development plans as of last night. And in that professional development plan, behavioral issues, behavioral concepts, behavioral plans for teachers is part of that. And I'm hoping very much to see more and more of that take place as our class sizes, obviously, are getting larger. And obviously, what Ms. Parker said, I agree with wholeheartedly. The parents, the students, and the teachers really have to be reminded of that scenario, the larger class sizes, and all be really on the same page, and be very much willing to back our teachers, administration, when things do come up.
Mr. Joya, would you like to comment?
Yes, in regards to fees, it's two parts. There's obviously a variable part, and that's going to be your uniform, but there's a fixed part. And the problem with that, and it's particularly a big problem in subscription busing, parents are going to have to make choices. And the cost, especially when it's a fixed element, can increase drastically if fewer people can afford those programs. I believe the original estimate on busing was closer to $700 a student. Now, it's $550. That number can fluctuate pretty drastically. And that's how it's calculated. In regards to class sizes, yes, that's an issue that I've brought up a couple of times. You know, we are at 25. We were at 16 and 18 students. We've seen an article here about how great our school system is, how great our students' scores are. And I asked the question in the board meeting, how can you increase a class 40% and expect to have the same test scores? I think it's something we need to think about. If our test scores don't come down, why did I pay for such small classes all these years? You can't have it both ways. So this is a reaction to the position we've placed ourselves in by mismanaging our budget for years. Those are the facts. It's not ideal. I'm sure if the superintendent was having a cup of coffee with you, she'd rather have smaller class sizes. But this is what we're dealing with, because we've made a lot of big mistakes.
Thank you. I don't believe there's any more questions. Oh, there is one. Okay, two more.
My name is Beverly Sturrock, I live on Ravenswood. I know two of you are on the board, so even though everybody has to answer the question, it's really more towards the people who didn't draft this budget that we're about to put on the ballot. But my question is, as the budget is drafted, it is what it is for now, and it's going on on April 27th, I want to say, to the two people who are not on the board, and then I guess the people who are on the board, do you support the budget as drafted, as we will see it at the end of the month?
Thank you. I'm going to start with Ms. Parker. And do you support the budget as drafted?
I do support the budget as drafted, because I think that Mr. Saragines has done everything that he could possibly do in a very limited amount of time. And, you know, I think that the board did a great job of asking everybody for their input. And I think that the budget reflects what the majority of people of this town ask for. And, look, do I, I don't want our kids to have to pay to play. I don't want them to have to pay to be in the band. I, you know, there are, I don't want the class sizes to be bigger, but there are things that, you know, we can't get what we all want in this economic climate. So that said, yes, I do, to not, the danger in not supporting a budget, to me, is far greater than accepting what we've got and then working, going forward to come up with other better solutions, revenue streams, and that kind of thing. But yes, I do support the budget.
Ms. Jakossis, do you support the budget as presented?
I actually do, and mostly for the reason Ms. Parker had also stated, is we worked very hard to have a roundtable. And it did take place, and it was an amazing, wonderful turnout. And we did utilize the public's input. Nobody wants to make cuts at all, especially being a teacher in the system. I will tell you how much I don't, feverishly do not want any cuts to be made at all. If anything, I want to add things into our program. I don't want to start streamlining them down to it's just a bare-bones educational system. I want to add things to it, but that's not the case. We don't have that luxury right now. So, yes, I do support the budget. And I can very much state, one of the reasons I support the budget is because it's come from the town. And I cannot applaud you all enough for making it such a priority to you so that we can echo your sentiments everywhere we could.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes, I am in support of the budget. I have seen what happens to a school district when a budget fails. And I would not want to see Mountainside have to go through that same kind of a situation. Dan did a fantastic job planning this budget this year. He looked into situations that had occurred and showed us how to get out of them over the course of the next couple of years. We will have another tough year of budgeting ahead of us, but we will be seeing the end of these situations that we have found ourselves in over the last couple of years. You know, he recommended to have the district join the New Jersey School Board Association Aces Energy Co-op. He's done things that has added to this budget that will help see us through over the course of this year. So I am in support of the budget, and I hope everybody that goes and votes on April 27th will also be in support of the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Joya?
This is a very distressed budget. Let's make no, there's no question about it. There's real problems with this budget. There's real problems with this budget. But the question I have to use, what choice do we have? And that's really the issue. Mr. Saragnes has done a great job, I agree with that. But this is reactionary. We're doing the best we can with a horrible situation. Our taxes are going up, our class sizes are going up. We're asking people to pay for subscription buses and co-curricular activity. But what are our choices? And that's the problem. Over the last couple of years, we've been pushed into this corner where we don't have a choice but to say yes. Because where does it go if we say no?
Thank you. Very good question, and it means everybody needs to go out and vote and vote for the budget, probably. If that's all of the questions? Pardon me? Okay. Well, the gentleman behind him had a question?
Tim Pank, fourteen sixty-sixty, your path, just on the community input angle. Each one of you, would you be willing to vote with the contract negotiations to freeze salaries and also push for a larger thirty percent increase into the healthcare costs? Basically, that's it. My wife is also a school nurse. But realistically, for twenty-two years, it came out of our pocket. When we got the benefits, I felt like I won the lottery. But now, when I hear that people aren't willing to co-pay or put thirty percent in, thirty percent is a lot better than a hundred percent. So, just wondering if each and every one of you would be willing to push for a freeze in salary and an increase in benefits, paying into the benefits.
Okay. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Joya. Would you vote to freeze the pay and possibly increase the benefits?
Increase in benefit, definitely yes. There's no question about it. You know, I think we've heard that there's two classes. There's people who have great benefits in this state and those to pay for them. And I think there needs to be some equity in benefits. Again, like I said, I've paid benefits in one paycheck more than teachers paying a year. So, certainly, I think they should be paying a portion of their benefits. In regards to salaries, on the surface, yes, I'm all for a salary freeze. What I don't have is the benefit of information look over the last three to four years, maybe even over the last ten years. Before I'd make a decision on that, I'd have to have the information and try to understand how those salaries have increased relative to the cost of living, and how those salaries have increased relative to professionals in similar fields. But I believe I would probably vote for a salary freeze.
Ms. Jakossis, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are first, percentage wise, the teachers may be paying the same percentage in their salary that you are paying, and yours would be making that much more money. I don't know that. But yes, there's many things on the table in the sense that that's always an option, and that's always something that looked at, to freeze salaries. And our teachers actually have done that. And I'm, we don't know, but yes. Unfortunately, in times like this, we have to make those choices, so yes. In the case of benefits, I think we're all doing that, and slowly, that is the wave anyway. So, absolutely.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, last year, the administration took a salary freeze, and actually, in our budget, we didn't allow for raises last year for the teachers. So, there was a freeze across Mountainside for that. Benefits, they've been asked to pay by the state, and like Mrs. Jakossis had said, the wave is coming, and I anticipate that they will be asked to pay more from the state. And it will be out of our hands. It'll be state mandated. But, you know, across the board, everybody else pays for their medical benefits, and thirty percent, or whatever the state will determine, I feel the teachers could pay.
Ms. Parker?
I do believe that it's an option that I would consider. Again, with a salary freeze, I would have to look back at the numbers and go back a couple of years and see what's been done. I mean, I know in the most immediate past, and see, to look at that more carefully. Benefits, like everyone says, it is the wave, and eventually, I do believe it's gonna be something that's mandated, so, and I think that most teachers that I know would be willing to, you know, do the same thing everyone else does. So, in terms of salary freeze with benefits increase, yes, it's something that I think is an option.
Thank you.
Can I just piggyback?
Yes, thirty seconds.
Along with freezing salaries, I know our ministry also gets merit pay. So, that's also something to consider, to see if that would be forego'd also. Because if the teachers are not getting a salary increase, they don't get an option of merit pay. I think it's also an option to bring to the administrative level also of taking a zero merit raise increase also.
Anybody else? Okay, then, oh, another question?
Hi. Kirsten Post, Bayberry Lane. It was implied that if larger class size doesn't reduce our test scores, why keep class size small? Do you see any other benefit to smaller class size than test scores? And similarly, do you believe our district's success or quality of success should be judged primarily by test scores?
Okay, Mr. Joya, are you comfortable with that question?
Yeah, let me just make sure I understand the question. It's a question of if I think that the only value in small classes is test scores? And was there another part to that question?
Yes, do you think test scores should be the primary way?
Yes, okay. Okay. So, with the first question regarding test scores, you know, obviously, test scores are an important part of educating our children. Again, we're in the business of educating kids. And how do you test them? The true test that you're not gonna, you're not gonna know for years to come. But the fact of the matter is, we do have standardized tests for a reason, to see how our kids are achieving relative to other students within different districts and different states. So, while it's not a perfect system, it certainly adds value. As far as, is that my only concern about larger class sizes? No, absolutely not. Anybody knows that you can have a class of ten or a class of twenty-five, and all you need is one rotten apple, and things change very quick. The reality of it is, the larger the class size, the larger the chance you have that you have the rotten apple, or you have some kids off in the corner goofing around, or you have a teacher who misses something, whether it's a kid pushing back on his chair or someone goofing around in someone's desk. And there's a lot of benefits to smaller class sizes outside testing. But testing is just the way that we can get a standardized idea of how we're performing within our peer group and the state and across the nation. So, it's something we just need to consider.
Ms. Parker, can you address that? Do you think that smaller class size is just to increase that testing?
To test, test scores? Uh, can I do, can I do them the opposite way?
Surely.
Do I think test scores should be the only, only way that we measure performance? Success? Absolutely not. I think that it can be a good tool, it is a good tool. It determines funding, it determines a lot of things, it determines placement. But there are a lot of kids, and I have one of them, who happens to test well in subjects that when she gets to the classroom, all of a sudden, I don't know where, where those smarts, those alleged smarts, went. So, I don't think that test scores are the be all and end all. I do think they are important, but I think that other factors weigh in. And as far as smaller class sizes go, no. The, I actually think there's maybe a benefit, especially in a district this small, to having, I certainly wouldn't wanna see a class with ten or fourteen kids, because there are kids, you know, who are not, who wouldn't know each other if they were not in classes together. You've got the brainy kid over here with maybe the kid who's not so smart but plays the piano or soccer. And I do think that that is an advantage to a moderately larger class. I'm not saying we should have twenty-five and thirty kids in the class all the time, but I don't think that the, that the only value in, just the opposite. But I do believe there are benefits to a larger class, and I don't see an advantage over small, larger classes when it comes to test scores.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Can you just restate the question?
Well, I know.
I've lost it.
I started. No, I think...
It was kind of a two-part.
The second part is the biggie, which is, should test scores primarily be the means of evaluating success? And that is, is the small class size, is the success of students, is that the only reason for small class size, or are there other reasons?
Yes. Test, our test scores, the first part is, should our success as a district be primarily judged by the quality of our test scores? And the second part is, do you see any other benefits to small class size other than higher test scores?
It was implied, and then clarified by Mr. Joya, that, he said, if I, if our test scores don't tank, why pay high taxes for them? If the test scores don't tank, should we keep class sizes large forever then? Is there any other benefit?
I think she's got it.
Okay. I don't know if I do. I do not think test scores are the only measurement of good performance in a district. However, standardized test scores are the only measurable means that we have to determine how our children are doing against other districts, other towns, and other states. There are many things that contribute to the success of a classroom. The teacher, if there's an aide in there, the mix of the kids. Many things will go into student performance, not just how they test. Are there other benefits to having a small class size other than test scores? I am actually fond of a larger class. I think that the kids can feed off each other in a positive way and, you know, help and benefit one another with their knowledge and a broad spectrum of what they come to the table with. So, I would not wanna see a class size down at Deerfield of fourteen or fifteen kids. I feel, you know, that twenty kids in a class size and even going up to twenty-five. I know, I think, I look back on my pictures in my scrapbook of my classes, and I was sitting with twenty-eight to thirty kids, and I got a good education. All of us went to college, we all did what we did, we're all out in the workforce. So, I think that you can benefit, sorry, both ways.
Okay. Ms. Jakossis?
Yes. Well, I'm not a strong component, especially of the New Jersey Ask. The one prior to that, the gap, I know there was one actually prior to that for a very shorter period of time. I thought it was a much more indicative response of what the kids are learning in school. The New Jersey Ask is very difficult for a lot of students in the sense of the reading comprehension of it, the reading questions of it, that a lot of kids who could do very well in the classroom and who do perform extremely well in the classroom just can't handle the format of that test. Years ago, God, I'm dating myself now, we were moving to the portfolio approach. So, we do have means of evaluating ourselves from other districts. Unfortunately, it's just not being used. A portfolio approach was, we use some test scores, I think much more appropriate tests to utilize those scores with. We use writing samples, we use math samples, we use a lot of samples of day-to-day progress from pre-test and post-test. I bet truly, in my opinion, captured the take of what a child is doing, learning, progressing, not progressing in the classroom, and an overall experience, which that's, those experiences is what we bring to our educational, from our educational process into the workforce. Class size, I'm much more for a class of eighteen to twenty. I know myself when I teach, I love it, I'm mostly math now, I can teach math and English. But the personal approach I can bring into my teaching when we're going over math, kids hate math on a whole, some kids love it. But when you bring their lives into it, like when you're doing proportions and percents, and you're doing concepts in math, and you bring their lives into it as you're putting examples on the board, those kids are beaming, and they're smiling, and you put those, oh, darn, into a test, they can't wait to take that test, because they're excited. They can't wait to see themselves in your class experience. Twenty-five to thirty, I've taught it, it's hard to do. Sorry.
It's hard to do to get it into the right time, too. All right. We have pretty much exhausted those questions, and I really do appreciate the questions. You worked hard on those, and we appreciate the answers. So, now, we're going to move to the closing statements from each of the candidates.
May I ask one more?
No, no. We're going to move to the closing statements right now. So, they will be allowed three minutes apiece for the closing statements, and they're going to go in reverse order, so that the first speaker in closing will be Kathy Jakossis.
To me, there is nothing more important than a, excuse me, that a parent can give to their children than an education. But I don't think that education starts and stops in the school itself. It transcends throughout the community, and we as a community should work together and collaborate with the sharing of ideas and concerns to improve, enhance our educational experience for all of our children. We need to stand together and to do the right thing for our community and these children. Watching a town unite and come together to preserve its ways of raising, educating our children is a wonderful thing to be a part of. I believe that as a board, excuse me, of education member, being a part of that process is a gift that keeps giving. Idealistically, I'd love to see a diverse board of professionals, lawyers, business, business opportunities, finance, et cetera, every aspect, to see and to meet with the many facets that provide in improving the information that we need here on the Board of Education. Education, although it is a multi-multi-million dollar business, we cannot lose sight that that ultimate goal is the business of educating our children. Having an educator who's currently teaching, who I can bring my professional experiences to those decision-making processes of the day-to-day workings of the school, such as curriculum schedule, the actual needs of the teachers and the students, and the running that can be a valuable asset to the hands-on working knowledge of what academically can be very successful. And thank you very much all for coming out. Thank you very much for all your questions, and good luck, everybody.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Dante Joya.
Yeah, when I, when I got up to voice my frustration a couple of months ago at the town hall meeting, I had no intention or desire to run for the Board of Education. But something must have resonated, and after my wife and I were approached by community leaders, teachers, parents, neighbors, I felt at a minimum obligated to try to understand what the budget problems were that our town faced. And what I realized after poring through public records and attendance in Board of Education meetings is that we had spent beyond our means for years. By draining reserves and providing inaccurately low enrollment estimates of Governor Livingston, we hid those budget shortfalls, and we pushed back tough decisions where we completely ignored them. Through continual lack of fiscal transparency, they were able to hide that from the public, and responsibility was successfully avoided until the state changed the way that they fund our district. So, that's why I'm here today. I'm here to run for the Board of Education, to reset the course, to rebalance fiscal responsibility with a strong education for our children, and to create a standard of fair fiscal transparency. And make no mistakes, there's no fix-it button here. This budget continues to be difficult through 2012, 2013 at a minimum. We still have two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars in that year of unfunded debt obligations, and we also have another Governor Livingston tuition adjustment due to our inability to provide accurate enrollment numbers. Without proper oversight, I'm concerned these problems continue, our taxes increase, and our class sizes continue to increase. With the proper leadership, we can start looking at a balanced budget beyond 2013 that doesn't burden our taxpayers and our children. I have finance experience that the board currently lacks. I'm resourceful in negotiating, planning, strategy, accounting, treasury, bank relationships, and much more. I believe that's experience this board needs to reset the proper course, to create an affordable future that preserves the high standard of education this town is proud of, and to keep us from making the same mistakes again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Jeanne Parker. Jeanne, sorry.
It doesn't matter, I'm just gonna finish my opening statement, no. Seven years ago, I had never heard of Mountainside, New Jersey. I didn't know much about New Jersey, I certainly hadn't heard of Mountainside. And I wound up here literally as a result of an accident and a Sunday afternoon U-turn. With each year that passes, I realize how really, truly lucky we were to have found a town with such a strong sense of community and volunteerism and a genuine desire to do what is right by its children. And we are very fortunate to have a school district that not only provides quality instruction, but constantly looks to enhance the core curriculum with new ideas and new approaches. We have a dedicated team of teachers, many of whom go above and beyond the call every day. We have, at Deerfield, I don't know if any of you have had the chance, I hope you've had the chance to meet her, but we have a... had the chance to meet her, but we have a fantastic principal who really gets it, who is candid and forthright and really seems to care about what's going on with those kids. And we are lucky to have these kind of things. The biggest challenge going forward is going to be in trying to figure out how to maintain our educational goals with the financial resources we have. And if I'm elected, I won't forget that I represent all the people of this town, and I will work diligently and collaboratively with fellow board members to ensure that we have ongoing communication between everyone in this town, strive to make sure we keep up a quality curriculum, strengthen the fiscal oversight, especially the kind of situations that have gotten us in the mess that we're in, and just really work to carry out everybody's will. I have been a newspaper reporter for nearly 30 years. I ask questions for a living, I'm required to seek opinions from people on all sides of an issue every day, and then I have to objectively interpret and information and digest them, sometimes very quickly and often on a broad range of topics. And I believe that my skills, together with a sincere interest in the Mountainside community, its kids, and their education, would make me a solid addition to this board. Thank you very much, and regardless of where you cast your vote, please do so on the 27th of April.
Thank you. And the final speaker is, let's see here, Carolyn Williams.
I have enjoyed my three years on the Board of Education and look forward to more to come. I enjoy fostering the relationship with Berkeley Heights and being liaison to our high school. That also gives me insight into a larger school district, budget, curriculum. I actually get kind of a double whammy. I get, I learn it down here, and I learn it up there as well, so I have a lot to bring to the table. We have a great Board of Education here, we support our teachers to continue their education, we update curriculum. Mr. Conroy gave a great presentation last night on our district's professional development plan. We have put a lot of things in place over the last three years and the three years even previous to that. With bringing Dan on board and the broad input from the community at the roundtable, we devised a budget this year that we can be proud of. And like I said, we have a few more years to go with a budget that is going to be tight. But Dan has given us the insight to see our way out of some situations that we are in at the moment. I want to make sure that we do remain fiscally responsible to our town, to our taxpayers by devising the pay-to-play and having the parents have to ante up for busing, and that is never a fun thing to do, but it will keep the taxes down for the seniors in town. I'd like to see us to continue to improve our curriculum articulation with Columbia Middle School, so that when our kids merge up there at Berkeley Heights, they're on the same track with Governor Livingston High School. I re-enter this election with no agenda but a strong desire to represent all the children, work with the teachers, and balance those interests, keeping all the Mountainside residents in mind. So, I'd like to say it's an honor to be running for reelection on the Board of Education here in Mountainside. I'm committed to serving the children of Mountainside, along with the administration and teachers, and have proven myself as a dedicated board member. I have been actively involved in many aspects of the community, volunteering my time to further the extracurricular activities offered to our children. I have a vested interest in the school and in the town as a whole. And I hope I have, over the last three years, created a friendly and open environment of a partnership between the Board of Education, the community, and staff that started when I was PTA co-president. So, I encourage everybody to get out and vote on April 27th and to vote yes for our budget. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I really want to give all of our thanks to these volunteers who've done a very good thing this evening and who are offering to serve you as a community. We owe you that. Ms. Ripman, do you have some closing statements, please? Oh, thank you.
Kelly Jurzak, the other PTA co-president. On behalf of the Mountainside PTA, I would like to thank our Board of Education candidates for coming here tonight and sharing your views and opinions. Tonight, you heard from four out of the five candidates Maureen Hest did not attend. A big thank you to our moderator, Dawn Clark, for her fantastic job tonight, and to the League of Women Voters of New Jersey for their continued support. Another thank you to Maria and Wendy for keeping us on time. And we'd like to thank Dr. Bobles, Mr. Ty, and Mr. Black for your assistance with the venue and setup, and thank you to TV35 for being here to tape the event for the broadcast for the public who could not be present tonight. Also, the Westfield leader on the patch, thank you for covering the event. Last but not least, we truly appreciate the audience members for coming out, participating, which wouldn't be possible without all of you. Thank you for your questions or interest, we need you here. We trust that this event has been successful in its goal of providing more information with regard to the candidates and issues of the upcoming election. Please remember to get out and vote on Wednesday, April 27th. And while I'm in here, I'd also like to mention that Saturday, the PTA is holding their science fair, Saturday the 9th, in the Deerfield Cafeteria from 12 until 4:00. And we are also having a screening of the movie Race to Nowhere on Friday, April 29th at 8:00 p.m. in the Deerfield Gym. So, I'd just like to thank you all again, and good night.